So this is, this is a secondary list for the facilities projects. For the district, again, this list will help us get ahead of our capital improvement plan. To help us reallocate some of those funds and make some of those allocations not as high into alleviate. The plan going forward and allow us to create a better 10 year approach as opposed to going heavy the first three, four years as we have. This will also allow us to get ahead of projects that we know are up and coming at Timbered Academy and the Three Rivers School. As we heard last week or two weeks or two weeks ago from the Hill School renovation committee. There's a serious need there. We know about that need. We've identified the need. And we plan on pursuing that need hot and heavy moving forward. So some of these items on this list today would help us get ahead of that and alleviate that. So with that being said, I'd ask for a roof for $120,000 at the Timbered Academy on top of the library. This roof is from the early 90s from what our history shows us, but we don't have the true history on the roof. And it's definitely past its life expectancy. We would ask for a utility vehicle for our grounds department for $15,000. Right now we have John Deere gators. These gators help us tend to the fields, tend to the facilities. Tend to the trail systems, support the schools within their field days or whatever their need is for those vehicles. And more specifically, we share with the athletics department here at Timbered Academy and you can see the athletic director or the. Trainer using that gator every single day. Next, some exterior doors at Three Rivers and Timbered Academy. Many of our doors are metal. They rust at the bottom specifically. They seep air in. They fail, for lack of better words. We've seen this district why we were able to replace these metal doors at the Hill School a couple of years ago with aluminum doors. And we've replaced a couple at Three Rivers and a couple here at Timbered Academy. Aluminum is maintenance free and a longer lifespan. With that, it would also help us get into ADA compliance with a couple of our entrances. Specifically, the triple doors that go into the entrance by the auditorium here at Timbered Academy. And again, aluminum, maintenance free, don't rust, longer lifespan. Next on the list would be some door access controls for $10,000 at Timbered Academy and the Hill School. Specifically, the Hill School has a serious need for these as COVID has shown us their company going at all these doors. We can't physically just unlock doors these during these days and in these times. Access controls allow us to give a fog or a key card as they're called to the staff member. To allow them to enter and exit whenever they need to for whatever the situation they arise, whether it's safety, whether it's an incident with a student, et cetera. And lacking, contrary to what people would say, we actually don't have many here at Timbered Academy. I know people think we, we start here, we go big here. We have them with the access controls and they're lacking many. And their staff should have some entrance points and exit points, whether it's for coming and going throughout the day. And specifically safety throughout the day to be able to come and go safely. As well as what COVID has shown us is the outdoor classroom approach where they should be able to go through, say, the cafeteria doors if that's a. Pick location and come back here. So access controls are lacking at those two buildings. Cafeteria tables here at Timbered Academy for $48,000. These tables came, I believe, with the new addition. They're over 20 years old. We do our best to show you guys the good ones in the horseshoes, but it's a constant maintenance battle. Many of them are held up by screws and bolts and nuts. They're falling apart, they're aging out, and it's time for some new tables here at Timbered Academy. We, they're multiple use as you see within this meeting. They house college fairs, they house lunches, they house meetings. They house pop off dinners. They're used, they're rolled, they're tired. Next on the list would be an excavation site for a playground area at Three Rivers. This would help excavate an area to flatten the area to create an area to add some playground equipment, equipment moving forward. It would also allow us to repaint the hot top area that the basketball court holds and kind of just beautify that area a little bit more. As you've heard, next on the list, as you've heard before, there's fencing at Three Rivers for $20,000 we would ask. I put that on my initial list. It got pulled off of it. So I would just ask on this list that we would reevaluate that. That fencing is for around the dugout on the Three Rivers softball field and the baseball field. Next on the list would be some gymnasium wall pads for $8,000 at Three Rivers. Those ones, John could probably attest, I think they're probably original. There's about eight of them there. They are long overdue, their life expectancy. And we also, they're also lacking in what they cover. So there's about eight of them covering maybe 15 feet, but we really should be covering 30 to 50 feet, et cetera. Next on the list would be some playground landing pads for the Hill School. What landing pads are? Those little rubber mats that you might see on their swing sets or on their slides. We do very good at adding an allocation of certified playground chips every single year. It's a lot of maintenance with those kids on the swing every day of breaking those holes back in. So in conjunction with adding our chips every year, we would put these pads on top of those chips. Which would allow us to create and maintain a flat surface a heck of a lot better than we can right now. So a lot less breaking, plus an added protection for those little kids. Next on the list would be some portable walls at Three Rivers. Moving forward next year, they have some programs similar to maybe what Wendy's doing at the Hill School where they probably are. They're looking to overtake the activity room. These portable walls again would allow us to put some walls in there, allow them to create the space they need for the educational aspect. Without having us actually to put up a wall and then next year come down and take that wall down, et cetera. And last on this list would be some air conditioning replacements, which was on my first list. They got pulled off. I would ask you to reevaluate that so we can get ahead of some of these air conditioning units at Timbered Academy when they go there. That's my list.
I just have two questions. So utility vehicles, is this something that we should start looking to put into the next law and article for next March? Because it is stated as vehicle expandable trust fund. So should we start looking at some of the smaller utilities to be put into this fund also?
So I would think this would be in our equipment trust fund. It's, I put it in our capital improvement plan either last year or the year before. But this doesn't carry a license plate and it's more of equipment traveling around the facility as opposed to the vehicle trust fund. To me would be our van and our truck, not our tractors, not our utility vehicles, not our towers, et cetera.
Thank you. And a second item for the air conditioning replacements, are these window replacements, are these window replacements?
They are.
So have we thought about putting central air, agenda with support?
So we've looked at central air specifically in the classroom wing throughout our Honeywell projects. And I can't speak for the number to be truthful, other than the number will show up here.
Oh, I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Total questions as well? My first question is about the, the door access controls. The ones that you expect, do those include some sort of report generating so if there's ever a need to. For security or something that there can be a report told to see when, you know, someone accessed the door?
It does. So we don't necessarily pull reports, but if something did happen. That would be one of the means that we could pull something to say April's car went through the cafeteria door at 10:00 PM on Saturday.
Great. I'm just thinking like if, you know, for some reason that's something they request, can we provide them? Do we have the ability to provide them?
Yes.
That's great. Thank you. My other question was about the playground landing pads and I was hoping you could talk a little bit more about those. Commercial ones may look much different than residential ones. And I know the residential ones are pretty small and they're kind of hard to secure. So, and they move around a bit. So it sounds great, but how do you make sure these pads don't move around as kids play on playground?
So these are three by three mats. They have a little bit more weight. There's no anchor to them. They're just, it's a commercialized mat that with the size of it going under each one, we anticipate those, they'll stay there.
And I'm not sure this is already done, so excuse me, I can answer that, but routinely, you know, does staff walk around the playground to make sure things are safe? Because again, I could see those moving, but if you periodically do review that area and straighten it out?
Yeah. So our custodian there does it once a week. Our grounds crew does it every single time they're on the site. They're always looking at it. And we do do a formal report that we just stuck in the file once a summer.
Thank you so much. So what is the total that we're including?
I got 327. That sounds better. I didn't total it. I had to total. God forbid I did not.
And then the second question, if any of these items here currently on the budget that's 20 March 22. That if we paid for them now, it would be coming off that budget.
Possibly the fencing, but I would have to check my numbers.
Thank you. I just didn't have time to do that.
And I will double check and if that is the case, I will pass it to them.
Well, thank you.
One more caveat to this and just, I said it with the last ones. The list is great. The list is needs, but it doesn't necessarily, like the times we're in, it doesn't mean that necessarily tomorrow that the list is just more years. So as we've done with some of the other ones, we've priced them, we've shopped them, we've got them in the budget. We hope to get them this summer and I intend to get them this summer, but you never know up there right now. So we will get them for next year. We just might not see this roof done when, say, the SAP roof is done. As much as we'll, we'll try and orchestrate that, but we might have missed the boat right now.
Maybe, but I think with that statement, I'm just a little confused because with the same 2021 end of year project list. I'd like more information about which budgets are we drawing these funds from? Would they be the current year's budget? I guess that's your superintendent.
Yeah. So that's a great question. What we have to do is encumber the funds by June 30th. So as long as the work is scheduled by June 30th, it comes out of this year's surplus funds. I think what Josh was saying was we'll get it done as soon as we can, but it might not be this summer. But it will be encumbered from this year's surplus. Thank you.
I forgot one question related, but it's not the tax. And A, it may result in me making a motion to table the motion. I'm wondering, so on the face, I'm supporting the bulk of this and if my numbers are correct. If we funded this whole list, we're still at a surplus of over nine and a quarter, nine hundred twenty thousand dollars. And that's almost quarter million dollars more than the number that we talked about at the school meeting where we were addressing the public. My question though is for the principals, do you guys have a list of, you know, if we, to get these. Facilities, things taken care of would be great, but I'd also be interested to hear if there are educational areas that we need. You know, we've had those science books in the budget every year for 10 years. Is there stuff that you guys? Need and if, if you're not prepared tonight. I guess I would make a motion to table this. It's a nice time so that we can see what, what your building is going to be as well. So if you want, you just want to take a minute with us.
So we do have one thing that we have been playing for, but would definitely help us moving forward, especially coming out of COVID. We currently use, we work with Leslie University for the literacy collaborative and we've been building up that curriculum. And right now we're looking to expand our K1 to for our guided reading program. Those run about 6,500 per grade level. It's an extensive collection of leveled readers with the lessons that teachers use. It's, it's a grade level resource. They all pull from it. We have a very extensive bookroom that you've heard about. This would go to complete our guided reading collection. It would be K4 in our building. We would be fully stocked on our guided reading and then that would very much facilitate us jumping into next year. And having the resources we need to help our kids out. So that would be for us the big thing that we have on our list.
Hey, I would echo what Wendy just said. We would like to buy one of those for our fifth grade so that the continuation could build up into Three Rivers. Technically elementary school of fifth grade. And that would really be supported. That's also about $6,500. And I'm always, you know, looking for playground equipment. That's always the, that's been, you know, those of you who've been down to Three Rivers know that it's kind of barren down there. And actually again, a lot of students say, there's nothing to do and they're lackered. So we're really trying to do some kind of fitness center, outdoor fitness center for our kids. I do have some money to spend fundraising, but each piece does get pretty expensive to do, to do a well. And there is nothing. There's two basketball courts and dry dirt. I mean, that's, that's it. Oh, we have to pick the things.
And a tent.
And a tent, oh, two tents. But it really, you know, for a school not to have anything for kids. And I've been there since it was built and we've now, we had 20 sets years ago. And those became dangerous really well. It's just been so prosperous over the years that we're trying to do some fundraising. Different groups says really hard to generate enough interest for a long enough time to pull that off.
You have a ballpark at all, like for 25 grand or 100?
Well, it depends on what we do. There is, Josh and I have talked a little bit. He may be good on the numbers and I am, but.
I would say 25 would give a start.
You know, we're pretty good with starting. They have outdoor bicycles, they have pole fires that keep them in the hole. We'd have to look at our areas of data, but we've got a whole fitness center. That would be great for calls too. Signage to tell you what to do, station, that type of thing.
Okay. I'm going to cash in all my fund marks. I've got. Our media specialist and our tech integrator are working on a proposal. Our library needs a transformation. It's pretty dated. You know, like a lot of things, there, everything here is so well maintained that it's, you know, hard to identify just by appearance what it needs an update. But our library does. And they have been looking at some quotes for. Not only modular furniture, but modular bookcases. So that that space can be used in a variety of different ways to facilitate, well, frankly, board reading. But also, you know, classes to go in and things can be moved to support whatever is happening. We, we have been looking at that from a grant perspective because what we have found through all of, through COVID is that. The stationary bookcases and the kind of older style furniture makes it difficult to fix now. To, you know, allow for social distancing and that sort of thing. And if we have up to date furniture and bookcases that we can move, it helps a lot. Caveat to that is all of that is very expensive. We were looking at it and we've talked to Josh about like a kind of a. I mean, we have the furniture in the bookcases, but then there's also the space itself. We have a maker space in one area. We'd like to put a wall in there that has windows so that that stuff is secure. It's not being used, but also students can see what other students are doing in there. And, you know, we probably need to look at a carpet, redoing carpet line, but once you do that, there will be asbestos available, which doubles that cost. So really, we're probably looking at this in two phases, one being the furniture and bookcases. And then the second one being addressing that floor and that wall. Yeah. So they have, through their research, they have two quotes. They were both in the $170,000 range. For the furniture in the bookcases. That does not include the wall or the carpet or the. So it's a pretty serious one.
Any questions for any other principals on that stuff?
I just had a question. So if we're looking for pavement of the basketball court. We're saying we only have two hoops now. Can we look into purchasing more before we, before we think about paving? We have room to make more basketball courts?
Oh, we used to have four, but it wasn't a basketball court. It was kind of, remember the parking area, whatever tall parking area behind the gates? We used to have two there. And we've downed down for a number of reasons why they were, they were kind of breaking. So we don't really have a place to put another court per se, unless we gain a tissue or money. So if we could put two back in there. Which, which would help, you know, I have no idea what basketball courts would do, but that would be one spot I, it's where we used to have. You know, but it's, I don't know if putting two more on either side on that basketball court would be appropriate or not.
Not, not on the actual court?
Not on the court.
It's too small.
Oh, so we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have room to add just a couple more hoops?
Well, what John's saying is to the existing paving area, possibly. But if you're talking a hoop, you'd have to recreate that area, a core.
Oh, okay. Is there something we can look at prior to paving? I mean, that's what the force, you know, is open with that. So I'm thinking that's one thing we can add quicker.
Yeah, the, the area that we would do, I'm not even sure, would disrupt the paving. We may go right in there.
Yeah, you can put them right back where we took them. Years ago, we put two new ones in and took four bad ones in.
Can you please remind me what you stated at the school district meeting in terms of the likely surplus? Did you say 700,000 even or did you say a different number?
I used 700 as our template. I think at the time, I guess number that Timbered Academy was eight would be advice that it would probably raise. I pointed at seven just because I wanted to give us some flexibility and not promise to move. So it looks like we found a significant increase in there. And I think if I know where you're going, I was kind of doing all the math over here and changing, double checking. And I think if we funded Joshua's list at 327. And then, I mean, I don't think I would be comfortable doing everything the principal said tonight without, you know, having them have time to throw up their notes. But going off the numbers that they did give, that is 2.1 for a total of 548. And the current surplus is 1,264,595. So when you get rid of 548 of that, the two is combined. We're sitting at 716,000 change, which is kind of a rare work. And he said, of course, there's more such thing with that number. I just wanted to look. Oh, I should have been saying, I meant to say that on the mic. I said, hopefully people can hear that or somebody can hear that.
Change that I was going to make to that handy. I could get behind what you said, but I picked up something that Dan said. Which is they were considering some grant funding for what I described in my notes as the modularization of the PA library. And I think that we should provide half of 170,000 because that's a very hefty chunk to provide matching grant incentive. And a lot of granting agencies will be attracted to that, you know, that there is seed money that is there available for match for grant funding. That's the only other thing that I was going to suggest, because I think it would be nice to exceed the $700,000 estimate by like a good chunk.
Good. Thanks. I guess, so just to clarify where we are, we do have a motion to the second to approve the facilities, but Joshua's inventory project is. Is there any other conversation around that list, what we discussed with the principals? Or I suppose the current surplus again, before we call the question?
So the motion is 327, 327,000?
Yes.
And then we could look at another meeting, like the principals list?
That's what I prefer. I mean, I suppose anybody could make a motion, but personally, I'd like to take that to next time if we can, if that's not going to leave us too short on time.
The issue is that everything needs to be entered in the system by June 30th. So we just need to be, we need to be ready to go. And then Dan, I guess you would have a lot of work to do between now and then to see if. People have done their pricing and have multiple quotes and that you could get that ordered by June 30th. So those are really good. And we could do a lot of work between now and then and maybe have firm members view and let, let everyone know what we're doing.
Yeah. I think that makes me more comfortable. I'd rather not approve, you know, any sum like this of this size without having some someone firm. So anything that you guys have gathered on those things or anything else that you think of between now and then, I would have it up here next time. Any else do you? Both. I did, I had a couple of questions that were happened to Josh. And next one about where the money would come from where it started, if that would be added to the trust. I may have just missed the gator. That would be a replacement, not an addition.
Yes.
That was it. All right. One last call. All right. So there's a motion to approve $327,000 from the surplus to fund the end of year list that we have been provided. Quickly, that's a roof at PA for $120,000, a utility vehicle replacement for $15,000. Exterior doors at TRS for $70,000. Door access controls at $10,000 at PA Hill. Cafeteria tables at PA for $48,000. Excavation sites, playground area, $20,000 on TRS. Fencing at TRS of $20,000. Gymnasium wall pads at TRS of $8,000. Playground landing pads at Hill at $5,000. Portable walls at TRS of $6,000 and intermission replacement at PA of $5,000. Yes. All in favor? Did you get eight, eight? All right. Opposed and abstentions? Right? Sorry?
I did, yeah, yeah. Yes.
It was a big, yeah. We had four.
If I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve. The expenditure of up to $10,000 for acquisition of the literacy program materials for K through five. That's the motion and I'll just speak to it. That seems like a much smaller amount than the other things that were discussed. In a well-known, well-established need. So I think we can act on that and just get that taken care of tonight.
Yeah, I would just clarify, I think it was 6,500 per grade level and how many grade levels? Okay. So three grade levels. If your intention was to fund the entire library.
If you want my motion to test what I heard, it was 1,200 per grade level and I couldn't help it.
It was 60, well, it was 6,500 per grade level and there would be three grade levels for Hill and then one for TRS. So to do that would be a total of twice as much.
Okay. I'm still a bit of a concept, but I do agree with what Andy said. Let's have it more formalized and talk about it at a later meeting. Sorry about this hearing, you guys.
No worries. Anything else around any of these topics before we move on to 7C? Oh, sorry, I missed it. So this would be our yearly woodchip pricing, so these prices would be for the 2021, 2022 heating season. And we sent it out to six companies, we got four responses. Unfortunately, one went out of business, and one did not respond. So first on the list would be Cuzano's Forest Products at $49.50 a ton. Next on the list would be Ford Mountain Trucking at $45 a ton. Next on the list would be North Country Pro Fuhrman for $65 a ton. And last on the list would be DH Hardwork and Sons for $40.85 a ton. They also have a gas fuel stipulation. For every 25 cents a gallon over $3, the fuel increases by 50 cents per ton. With that, even with that stipulation, my recommendation would be DH Hardwork and Sons, they're cheaper. The fuel right now is around $3 a gallon, so we wouldn't see a fuel surplus or increase, as you call it, until it got over $3.25. And we could see that go all the way up to $5 a gallon before we would even be at the next closest. So DH Hardwork has been in the industry since 1978. They're a family-owned business, they have a great reputation. And that would be my recommendation to choose DH Hardwork. I would also like to add one thing to that. We do this yearly, a lot of times in this line, you know, with electricity, with gas, with oil, woodchips, the same, et cetera, I would ask. Next year, that I'd be able to price it out or bid it out for three to five years. Many of these companies, when they do send the pricing yearly, they also give us that option. An example is, is one of these companies, five years out, will still be cheaper than our next company this year. So I think it's a chance next year to secure it for a period of time and allow us just to get on to something else, would be my recommendation. Just had one, Josh, I don't know if you lost top of your head, our current vendor and current price for this year? Yeah, we use CCN Logging throughout New London, we've used them a couple of times throughout the year. I believe we were paying $42.50. It might be $43.50, I'd have to check my numbers. And unfortunately, they were a casualty to everything going on out there in the world, and they sold off this part of their company in their own way. So. We answered this one. Motion to accept the recommendation to use DH Hardwork and Sons for woodchip for the 21, 22 heating season. Right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And in extension? Right, I think, is everybody okay with firmly telling Josh that next year looking at longer contracts is? Good? Amy's nodding?
Thank you.
Thank you, I think that was. I don't do really any utilities or anything like that, anyway, it's definitely my idea.
It's not commerce.
Okay, so moving on to 7C, RSA 19804-V contingency fund. Andy, you want to speak to this or do you want me to give a little introduction? Sure.
So this statute is a little bit, has been revised during this legislative session. In the past, the set-aside funds were 2.5% of the town's equalized valuation that could be set aside. The stipulation with those funds, though, were you had to spend every single penny in your budget before you could access them. And then they go back every single year and you vote a month or night and release them down to offset taxes, or you can retain them again for the following year. So this year, though, the statute changed, and it's now a 5% set aside of your town's equalized valuation. So Amber always figures that amount out and lets the boards know what the amount they can retain is up to. And the stipulation to use it for emergency funds when the budget is exhausted has gone away. So there's a lot more flexibility with the funds. This requires this to be placed on as a warrant article next year and for the voters to approve putting this into place. At the time, that it was a 2.5% set aside, the board chose not to put a warrant article. But the statute is very different now, and I know Ann was interested in talking about that, so I'll turn it over to the board.
Andy, do you have comments or anything you wanted to speak to?
Yeah.
I just want to go back, I think, a little bit further than probably the topic here is kind of, you know, if you attended the school district meeting, there was a lot of thought about surplus. And there has typically been a healthy surplus. This year is exceptionally high with a budget freeze, but, you know, it has generally been in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. As I said at the budget committee review the other night, that's not certainly unexpected, we're dealing with a $26 million budget. $500,000 is 2%, which, you know, most budget offices would say plan for 2% contingencies. Maybe even lower, I think most of them at the state they shoot for 2%. But what I said at that meeting is what has always been the case, the way that we operate is that at the end, whatever money is not spent goes to DRA. And DRA, once they set the final tax rate for the town, they take off that amount of money and it lowers that tax rate. What this would do is, again, if it was approved by voters at the school district meeting next year, is allow us to set up a contingency fund where up to 5% of the value, like Patty said, would be instead of return for tax impact right then, we go into a fund that could be used to follow up here. And then all the details that Patty offered, so just wanted to clarify a little bit. I think it's something that we should all look into ourselves and be there as ourselves with. I think we have some time with this, it does have to be a warrant article, and we're pretty much a full cycle away from that. But if anybody has any initial comments or questions or anything, you can certainly hear them. I think, I thought about it a little bit, and I guess I would, I would like more details on what it can and can't be used for, like Patty said, that things have kind of changed. I'm not sure I fully understand them yet. But if, I think for me, and for anyone who's listened to me at meetings over the years, the thing that would make me most interested in this is if I hooked over the math and I thought that this could help us flatten the tax rate in that. Now, I don't mean flat like no increase, more, I shouldn't say normalize. So if we can make it so that the surplus is more normalized, the tax increase from the schools, instead of being 60%, 1%, 1% next year, and 4%, if we, if it helps to flatten the up and downness of our tax rate, then I would certainly be in favor of working that. So that's kind of the angle I'm going to take on it. But does anybody have questions for Patty or for Ann, if she answers earlier with it, or any comments on it at all?
I think the most important, one of the important things is the contingency fund to meet the costs of unanticipated expenses that may arise in our new year. And, you know, last year was beyond crazy, the end of the year before. So I think it's, it's an important item to consider.
Agreed. And I think the other thought that I had on it is, you know, if we get to a serious conversation where we're trying to put this on the warrant this year, I, there's a lot of people I want to hear from. I want to hear from David at the town, and maybe the town treasurer or secretary or whatever that does the money over there. I want to get Dean's opinion on the language, on what it's, you know, unforeseen really mean. I think that this should be a community effort, to say the least. I think there'd be a lot of people that'd want some input from. Anything else on that before we move on? And thank you, Amy, for bringing that to my attention. I was not aware that those rules had changed until you brought it up, so appreciate that. So that will do 7E. Tendence, I just want to put a quick note on here, and this is not to reprimand or anything like that. But we've had a few instances in the past few months where we haven't had any representation of that. I think we just had the GEA meeting the other night, last week, and nobody from the board attended. So all I wanted to say on the matter really was, if you can, if you know that you're not going to be in attendance, please let me know as early as you know. And if you don't get a response from me quickly, text me if you have the ability. In most cases, if I have more than a day or two notice, I can fill in, but I can also send it out to everybody to make sure that we're covered. It's a big commitment, and all of these things we often, and I certainly am sometimes not even aware, that there are meetings going on, if it's not a committee on one, so I'm as guilty as the next guy. But just certainly don't hesitate to reach out to me and let me know if you're going to miss something. Because I would do everything that I tend to, cover it, refine coverage for it, so that we can, you know, stay in the room, just make sure that we're. That's all. So. Go ahead. Sorry, I should ask a question.
I just have a question about that, because I'm one of the three representatives assigned to the ARPA committee. And I was not in attendance, I'm sorry, you're going to answer, but part of my concern in reaching out, being that there's three of us, is we talked before about the illusion that we may be having a meeting if you reach out to other people. I'm not interested in any sort of creating a controversy that we may be doing that. So I would appreciate some sort of line of sight where, honestly, I would think that sort of your own board chair, maybe you should contact the chair of the ARPA committee. I'm not sure who that was to contact. So I would like some kind of, you know, if you want us to contact you, this is our board chair, that's fine, but I think it would be very helpful to have, like, this is what, you know, we prefer to have.
Sure, yeah, yeah, and I think it's, I think probably both, I don't even say we, to, for ARPA specific, we say ARPA chair, myself, and then Patty, then somebody's going to catch a quick shot and be able to be correct.
So my other question is, in this particular situation, you have three people assigned to that committee. And again, normally if there was one other person, I'd reach out to that person, right, to say, I'm not there, can you make it? But whereas a little more sticky, we have three people, just, you still want us to reach out just to?
Yeah, and it's actually why, sorry. Yeah, that's why, actually why I was thinking it would be us to reach out just, just to me, because I know I'm worried that you're sending it to people, and then I can do, my, honestly, my first instinct would be, I'll just go, if I can. You know, if my kids got back my lessons, then I'll, you know, text Jean or text whoever, I'll just go down the list until I find somebody without making a meeting. But that was my concern. If you, if you email whole board, first of all, not really supposed to do that, less information only, but then also, you know, somebody might be like, oh, well, I can go, and not say anything, and then it ends up with a whole bunch of us there when we don't. So if I've been willing to take on the coordination of the people I let me on, like I said, Patty, and then if it's ARPA, then whoever is running that, if it's SAU exec board, SAU exec board chair, whoever, and then, you know, I can. And the other thing, I mean, I can just check coverage too, because like you said, if we have two people there, that's funny. And this was a very odd situation, that all three people had to bail at the last minute. And I certainly don't want to give the impression that it's not okay in this meeting, we all have families, we all have obligations. So, but I was happy to coordinate that phone chain.
One other question that I have is, I know in the past, we received a list of what our meeting dates were. Has that been established for our board for the upcoming school year yet? Is it in our drive? Because I didn't see it in our drive. And then the other question following that, on that same thing, is it would be nice if we could get out something similar for those subcommittees? So even if whoever's assigned can't make it, we kind of know it's coming up. Thank you.
Sure, so Kathy drafted your board meetings, but we asked her to add a couple of meetings on it. We haven't picked the final date yet for July, so she's supposed to get. So if we add a meeting, hopefully tonight, I'll get that to her and she'll post it. And then all the other meetings are on the SAU, she does separate documents. So all the SAU meetings are on separate documents, will have whole board meetings, executive board meetings, and ARPA are on that one document.
So do we have access to that one document? Because I don't remember, I'm not saying it's not there, but I don't remember seeing that for any of the committee meetings in the past.
It's on the SAU website under SAU boards. The only committee on it is the ARPA committee.
My, I am not on the list, what I see, and I need to help anyone where that is, if I have to physically click through each month on the calendar, which can be a lot of clicks and not really user-friendly. So if we could really get a more user-friendly format, that would be really super helpful.
Yeah, I'll make sure that I find out where the link is and.
Thank you.
Get you access to it.
Thank you, easily.
Yeah, and then just, if it's a pain, no big deal, but one thought that comes to mind is I wonder if Josh could help us out after, we could help us out, or whoever the Google admin is. But you can make a lot of groups and stuff within Google, so maybe if there was a school board group that included the five of us and you and whoever else is necessary, then maybe we could ask Kathy to put all this stuff on Google Calendar that group shares. Is anything just important to your following inside you? If we could, I don't know, I don't know if that's, with the way that we are set up in the system, I'm not sure if that's Google or not, but to me, I think that would be easy, this is something, you know, all kinds of.
If you're okay with having all of the board meetings, there's one master Google calendar, so it would be shared with you, but you would see on the Chitester. Do you feel that's some announced time means I'm learning. If you're okay with that, that is the easiest way, is to just add that to your own calendar.
I just had a quick question. On the SAV, if you can read the website, all the way to the left on the bottom, where it's showing all the different districts, it has a full calendar. So are you saying there it's going to have all the subcommittees there?
No, that, so that's the full, that's a setup in a calendar for now, but Kathy does an actual document, like a one-page document that has the SAU board, exec board, and ARPA meetings on it.
Yes.
It doesn't have other committee meetings on it.
Okay, okay. Could we add it to that one, maybe?
I guess we would have to get all the committee meetings that we, it's, yeah, that's the tough part, is knowing when everything is, like the MTC, and I'm not sure what other committees there are, yeah.
Going into something we might be focusing on quite a lot when we get our goal meeting, our goal-setting meeting happening. Because we've talked about this as being an issue quite a number of times.
Agreed. Anything else on this agenda? Go ahead.
Yes, my concern is I'm looking for some sort of brainstorming to make sure that it doesn't happen consistently or periodically in the future, anything we can do to alleviate it, if that's what I'm hearing here tonight, is we're looking for ways to work around and get better at missing meetings. Thank you.
Do you have any more questions? Great, and we will move on to more reports, and I hope that we have Brian on this tonight. So we'll move on to the SAU exec board.
I wasn't able to make the last meeting, and I didn't have, I didn't see the meds printed yet or on the draft.
Patty was at the speed with her.
I was.
Sure, I remembered to grab my notes so that I could update all of you. So the last meeting was short. We announced that the SAU received a tax credit as well for $244,202. So that will go into the SAU surplus fund too. And then the border contract extension of one year with Durham Transportation, and they provide our special education transportation for the SAUs, there's a one-year extension on that contract. We didn't do anything with policies because we were missing members. We accept. We accepted a resignation and then approved hiring an O T for the S A U to be shared amongst our districts. I think that was pretty much it. Yes, thank you. We also approved, or the board approved, accepting the resignation of our Assistant Business Administrator. So that's a huge loss for our S A U proceed data will be leaving, and we have that position posted for the S A U office.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions? All right, A R A.
At the A R A meeting, the boards discussed, obviously, the difficulty of trying to come together with one agreement for each board to try and get their own representation and finding lawyers throughout the state who kind of represent one or more of the boards at some point. And came up with the idea that maybe there were things that we could just look at on our own and come to agreement on. So there may be areas that we're all interested in revising or amending. So the decision was made to gather up the A R A agreements from other school districts. They're on a ton, but we are currently working on pulling those and we're going to put them in the drive. And then it was asked that each school board talk and choose one member who would agree to read and compare the language in the area agreements that we post. And then come back to your boards and come up with some concerns that your particular board has with the agreement. And then maybe we get back together and see if there's some common issues or some common language that we could all agree upon, without having lawyers represent all of us at each juncture along the way.
Great, questions about that?
We make a plan to do that, I'm just looking. So this year is me and Andy and April on the A R A Advisory Board. So does one of us want to raise our hands to be watching those A R A agreements come into the drive and take the lead on that?
Yeah, everybody at board.
Timeline on that, because I didn't mind doing it, but I just cannot commit to do that as of any time this month.
No, I think this is going to be a process. There was no timeline, it was just, okay, let's start collecting those agreements and get them in the drive. And that was sort of an agreed upon approach. I don't know whether there will even be another meeting this school year. So they just, it was just a target for us, I think, to work on for next year.
With Andy and April on our line, taking the lead on that in conference with you two, of course.
Thank you.
Worth the read, I appreciate it. Okay, anything else on A R A? Okay, much committee? So I guess all I really say is we have M D C members expected the other day. That was good, everybody that was there kind of agreed that the session went pretty well this year. They expressed gratitude for the amount of information that they received. I don't think there were really any big takeaways for next year, big changes, other than there was some more discussion about trying to even out that surplus number to something, you know, reasonable. And I did let them know of the Assistant V A leaving. We're not hopeful that that's not going to impact the budget session too much. But, you know, that that may mean that Deborah has some extra stuff on her plate, so I asked just that they know that had time. Other than that, it was a good session, or in good shape. And I guess towards saying that, again, they're involved in meeting. We did have one member of the M D C indicate that he's not ready for a tournament this year. Which is for everybody out there listening that wants to get involved. I think you can establish a right town hall, and I believe that his position is appointed by the moderator. Pace.
If whoever's preparing an agenda wants to listen, that would be great. So there was a meeting just last night, and the headline is a little bit of rocky times for Pace. They are renewing their charter, which is just a normal part of the process of being a charter school. But they're having significant difficulty because of transition in personnel and transition in the location of where they operate. They cannot, they don't have access to a lot of the data they need to do that process. So they're struggling with that. And it's due November around there, so they're hoping they're going to get it done, working with the Department of Ed on that. They are in their annual budgeting process. And unfortunately, due to a number of considerations, their budget right now, despite diligent effort, is showing as a couple hundred thousand dollars in the bread, which is obviously not an approvable budget situation. And obviously not a sustainable financial model. And so there is tremendous focus on that right now. And there's going to be a special meeting held in a few weeks in advance of the deadline to approve the budget, which hopefully a balanced budget will be proposed at that time. However, wrapping up on good news, the interim Executive Director's report was very positive. I think the principals on the call will relate to this. The students are feeling exuberant about wrapping up the year, and they're having a very high and successful graduation rate this year. And so there's just a lot of excitement on that note. They're finishing the year on a very successful note by many, many measures. So that was the report.
Thank you. Any questions for me on that? Jeanie, that's on your end on the board, that's all. Great, anything else? Cindy, did you catch the note about changing the name on there? And the agenda always has Jean for Pace. Okay, well, I just didn't. Awesome, thank you. Anyone else on Pace? Right, and we're on to the end of this. I was wondering. I think we'll get it back, right?
Okay, well, some exciting news. I sent out a one call now at six o'clock tonight, that Fisher Cats, it was scheduled, I didn't do it during the meeting. But the Fisher Cats have increased the guest capacity for our graduation from four to eight per graduate. So that's great news, and I've already received some excited replies. So we're really thrilled about that. And by the way, you are all invited to that, if you are interested, it's on June eighth. It is going to be a great time, and we're going to have beautiful weather. And if you are interested in coming, just email me, and I'll try to, I'll facilitate that on the site, to make sure you come up. Spring sports are in full swing, and we have tried to clear some hurdles, but we'll make it to the finish line. N H I A did relax their mask policy, and we have followed suit, done the same, where we are still requiring that when students are not competing. This is for all spring sports, but when they are competing, it is optional with their use. And all of the schools in our cohort are, it's basically, we're following what we did in the fall. So if a school still requires them and they're hosting, then we would follow, we would follow along with that. And if they are here, we would say that that's optional. So that is what we've done, that's what we did in the fall. And based on that, N H I A's change in the language, we are going back to that. Okay, and then just end of the year events, I went over a lot of this during the A R A meeting. So we have winter carnival this Thursday, winter, quotes, this Thursday and Friday. Senior finals begin next week. And then our tent arrives after Memorial Day, and we have a spring concert on Wednesday, the second. We have a top ten dinner on Thursday, the third. We have an awards night on Friday, the fourth. We have a prong on Saturday, the fifth. We have convocation on Monday, the seventh. And then we have our graduation on Tuesday, the eighth, which, before that, we have class day in our senior barbecue here during the day. So June is going to start off with a bang, and then finals to conclude this school year.
What time is graduation?
Graduation is at five thirty at Fisher Cats.
I just had a quick question on the vaccine memo that, the email that went out. So is that the documentation the parents send back with the student if they choose to? And if they're age twelve and older, is there a bus coming from schools to here to do it? Or is it a parent's responsibility to pick them up and bring them here?
Yeah, the parent would have to bring them here for that. That will be right in our health office, and they, they sign up through R I A. R I A runs that program right through here. It actually works out perfectly, because we're going to have one carnival, so almost all of the students will be out on the fields during that. So it should be good. Welcome.
Just to follow up on the COVID vaccine clinic, I had a question, because I did see Rochester's words in the news. And one of the announcements that they made was, it wasn't just open to the public school students, but to any students, homeschool students, private school students within the district. Is that the same for the COVID vaccine that the district is sponsoring?
I only have access to contact information for member academy students, and I sent out to member academy students, and John sent out to River School students. I would say that if another student from a different school wanted to, you know, participate in that, they should get in touch with our nurse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess this is for the board, is this, if they feel comfortable, if this was, information was put on the town website? Because it's for families, and then that way maybe families who, students who don't attend, the public schools wouldn't be able to participate?
Yeah, I mean, it's, they, people sign up through R I A, so we're really just housing it here. So, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We also are, we're going to the process of our Marshall ceremony. Actually, glad the character came from here tonight, because we've been talking about doing it outside Marshall ceremony in our school. Josh and I will at some point walk the fields to see where the most appropriate place to be. And we will, it'll be June fifteenth, six o'clock, it'll be outside, we just get to pick the place. And at this point, I think we're going to be able to not worry about how many people are coming. We're still working on those numbers, but we anticipate about five hundred people. And it will be coordinated into their family groups, and they'll bring lawn chairs and blankets, whatever else they need. We'll also, Palace has been awesome, and they are going to be able to do cupcakes for the kids at the end. So we'll have a quick reception area, maybe with a place for the kids to get photographed. And, you know, hopefully we're looking for good weather, because we don't have it any day. It's going to be the next day. So it will be good weather, we're quick in this event. We are in the middle of our test unit in the state. We did three days last week, and we started our fifth and eighth grade science this morning, and the whole state system crashed. So we were completely bumped out, we lost all of our information. It did come back about eleven o'clock, so we were able to get, we weren't able to do the test at this point. We're going to try again Thursday, but it's quite unorientating to do that, so we have to reset and we'll do it again, we just kept those. But hopefully we'll have that finish up on Thursday. We are getting some preliminary plume, area scores, and I'm not sure what I was expecting. So I don't know if I'm feeling good or not, it's one of those, I don't know. But I do know that they've improved since the fall. So we're definitely seeing improvement overall. We do have some areas of, holy moly, that's unbelievable. And then we have some other ones. So I think until we get, we still have a lot of kids to make up on the tests, so we're still not finished. But it is not as, I'm not shocked, let's put it that way. I'm actually pretty proud of some of the areas, I was pretty, pretty amazed. We also have a lot of students that just missed the next level by one or two questions, probably. And so if it was a three, there was a nine with kids, if, you know, just get one more right, then we bumped it to a four. The other piece of this is I think it's important to remember, this is, this is one point of data, and we take many others. But it is, it's an important piece, but we also have to be realistic in understanding that, you know, for some kids, they honestly, they just don't think they're going to do it because they don't want to take it serious. And so we really making sure we're aware, it's not like any other year. This is another point of data that we can use to help improve on the discussion. We are looking forward to getting it done. There is an interesting feeling in the building at this point, I don't know if you, I think the other place applies, it's a, it's a fact of all. We are now discussing things that are not COVID related, and that feels kind of good. The years are interesting, Kirkland's getting pranked out. It definitely feels, I think I said it last time, it definitely feels like the first couple of weeks of school with the Henry here, but it is. So it's, they're pretty interesting. Our lunches are going great, the tests have been very helpful, so we've had all of our lunches outside. It's coming back and forth, that's been great, it's taken a lot of pressure off the building. And the kids are doing great, it's been windy, and so once in a while, lunch will fly off, but other than that, it's been pretty good. Our sports also, we follow, we're not a member of N H I A, we certainly follow those procedures, so we put those in place. So we won't, the details of all that is dead. But we do follow pretty much the high school, the way they do things. There are some exceptions in our league, and we'll follow the rules, but by and large, we follow N H I A laws or policies. Just to follow up on our vaccines, Jen brought it, Dan was nice enough to extend it to River School. And as far as transportation, that wasn't concerning, some parents will take them, they'll get them out of school, but we'll walk some of the roads over, also, we have staff that are willing to, it was a five-minute walk. As long as we have permission, written permission from the families, we'll just walk the child over. Some, it's just, went to the woods, and it's pretty, pretty quick, so we'll be able to do that. And we'll, you know, looking forward to more vaccines, the better. And that's all I got.
I don't know as much as they have going on, and I think I'm kind of glad, I'm listening to all the things that they have volunteered. But for us, we have, we did have SAS going on today, experienced the same thing. You know, get in and all of a sudden, you can't log in, the kids are not rostered. And then you get an email from the state saying, system crashed. And then, so third and fourth did not get to test today, we're a little bit easier for us to just, we can just shift it. We don't have the scheduling conflict attached on. So we'll get back into our, we used some of the time today to do some of the makeups. So we have to be done hopefully by the end of this week, finishing up next week. We did have some remote families choose to come into the building for testing, so we'll have to reschedule that. We'll have to reschedule that for them, so that they can come in and do the session. They all had the choice that they wanted to. The state recommended not to have them come in, but we still offered if parents wanted to have their child take the test. We're very thankful, so, and also they provided lots of snacks for the kids. And one of the things they said today, I think it was fourth grade in particular, wanted to know, if they didn't have testing, were they still going to have their snacks? So yes, they did, the most important part of it. The most important part of it, um so they had, that was very great. The kids love that. Kind of makes that the testing, which is typically stressful, just a little fun to have. Um this week coming up, we have our very first outdoor classroom day. We are very excited. Uh we had volunteers come on Sunday to help um clean up trails, get things set up. So we have four outdoor classrooms now. Um kids, the classes have been going out, but on Thursday it's going to be everyone get out there, spend some time in the classrooms, walk the trails. The kids love it and the weather's been beautiful. So we're very excited for that. Um and just want to thank all the volunteers that came out to help with that. That was pretty amazing. Um it's magical to to be up there with us. That's all we have going on.
On one of the chat Facebook pages, I believe that I saw um someone asking for supplies for the outdoor classrooms. Do you have everything that you need at this point or are you still looking for supplies?
No, we are, we have absolutely everything that we need. In fact, Dr. Ash was helping us secure some picnic tables um around there. Um I will have pictures and we will get things posted. We're kind of like holding a little hashtag and we're going to have a good beginning ceremony and everything. So um we'll get that posted, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. That brings us to the last review. And then one nine. Anything anyway?
Can I just make a very brief um report? I have completed my entire committee duties for the year on the trustee's scholarship.
Okay, so as a board, board record?
Yeah. Um so the um trustees uh of the scholarship funds met last week, um including uh Professor Morris. And we decided how to allocate eighteen thousand five hundred dollars in scholarship funds. And that will be going to a total of thirty-three students, which is a majority of current uh class of twenty twenty-one students and just under half alone night. And I feel like any more detail than that, I'm not supposed to go into, but they will all be getting notified uh later um in the coming weeks. And it was really exciting work to think about um, you know, the hope and potential in these students that we can support. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, I got to do that one two years ago. That's funny.
We had um there was a an email that we received a few weeks ago concerning additional um scholarship that they would like to start funding. Is that in place yet or has that not been approved by the board?
Uh is it the one that you emailed me about?
I didn't understand.
Did is that the one that you sent me the email about?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to catch up with you that. So I've I've redirected that to go through broader channels and say, "Much it's Patty, it's in the works."
Okay.
So yeah, we can, I think, I don't think we're far enough along yet to say much about it, but it's it's moving.
It's on the way. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Amy.
So with that, we'll move on to mine. And so we have a couple that have been on there for a while. We've got a lot that are second and some that are the first time. Anybody ready to take action? Amy.
Um I have some materials that I'd like to pass out to discuss IHBG uh before I make a motion. Uh Amy, I have a question here, but you're not here and I can't send it to you electronically. So I'll pass these down. Can Ann drum it out to me, the same?
I'm trying to figure out a particular website that it comes from. If you mentioned that, I could go to that.
Sure. A lot of it came from the drive. I just printed it out because I knew it would do a lot better when things are here or means that are in traffic. So the reasons I couldn't just offer all of us is because um it's pretty complicated. Um the board approved a, so there was a technical advisory come out of this school year about home education. Um the New Hampshire School Board Association revised the policy. This board approved that policy in December twenty twenty. Um just kind of giving you a brief overview. Um and then what happened is um because it's granted state, home educators did an analysis of this policy and um and they pointed out some flaws in the policy. Uh so then what happened is we, there was an email from the school district's government association in New Hampshire. We then sent a different help sample policy that's much less complicated. That was sent over to the school district's attorney who said that should we adopt this policy? In in general, it said, you know, we may want to have him look at the policy and help us make one specific to Pemro. Um some of the things that are um the language that's in the current policy that we have, that was the New Hampshire School Board Association policy. Um it's wording such as um it talks about the timeframe. The opening paragraph references that a parent or guardian may establish a home education protocol for a child between ages six and eighteen. Uh well, according to RSA one ninety-three one, compulsory attendance applies to children who are at least six years old as of September thirtieth of the current current school year and under age eighteen. Um another thing is the policy, um one of the flaws is that according to state statute, RSA one ninety-three dash A qualify, families actually have five days to notify their SAU if they are withdrawing or intend to home educate their children. That's not what the current policy we have says. Also talks about truency and truency is defined in RSA one eighty-nine colon thirty-five A as ten half days of unexcused absences during a school year. Um the New Hampshire School Board Association template policy uh did not note that participating agencies are required to provide an acknowledgement letter within fourteen days of receiving a family's home education notification. I think that's particularly important in a school district policy because if we're going to say what families need to do, we also need to direct our staff on what they need to do according to the law. Um also mentioned in here, there's no mention about the homeschool education portfolio relating to private property of the families per uh ED rule three one five zero six small letter B. Uh you can go through this list, you can look at it, but I think we, this is a policy we need to get right. We need to get it right for our school. People are watching and I love it when you can make great decisions and we become a leader. And this is something that we can do with the policy we currently have. So there's a lot of information to take in. You see the uh also the email that we received with the attorney. So at this point in time, I don't know if we need a formal motion, but what I'm looking for is concurrent that we can go to our school district attorney to draft us a proper policy that is in line with current state law and education laws in our state.
Questions, comments on that?
Sorry, one other thing on that. You'll see some extra policies in here. Um also in the New Hampshire School Board Association policy that we currently adopted, it references policies JG, which is student assignment in IHBG dash R. Um we haven't looked at those policies. If I I personally feel even going forward, if we're going to examine policies and they reference another policy, we probably should look at all the policies involved. For example, our current policy on JG student assignment was last reaffirmed in two thousand and six. That's been now in two thousand and fourteen, it was revised with the New Hampshire School Board Association. The other policy that it mentions is IHBG dash R, which is participation in public activities by home educated charter and non-public peoples. If I didn't make a note on here, but if memory serves me correctly, we do not have this policy. So again, this is why I'm asking that we please contact our school district attorney to guide us because what we received from the New Hampshire School Board Association for this policy, we need something different and more to get it right. Thank you.
Questions, questions?
If if I have to make motion, I would be that um the the board consults the school district attorney for helping draft a policy for, sorry, there's something here, if I can get it right. For IHBG, home education instruction and access to curricular, corporate activities by home educated students.
So there's motions or something?
I'll say.
Right, right, second. So discussion. I guess mine, I I would like some time as well, but my initial reaction, I guess, is included in this packet I see an email from Karen. And I guess I'll just read it because it's not too long. It says, "Good afternoon, Karen." I'm not sure who the Karen is questioned here, but um that's how it's addressed. It says, "Good afternoon, Karen. I have reviewed the draft policy from the School District Government Association of New Hampshire. The SDGA policy borrows the alphabet proposed by the New Hampshire School Board Association. The SDGA NH is a membership organization that was formed a few years ago by individuals who decided to offer an alternative to them to the New Hampshire School Board Association. The SDGA website can be found at sdga.org. The SDGA policy that you provided is not a local policy per se. And then it recites portions of the statute and writing for the law without relating the reference to the public school district. It also contains weaknesses in its content and its poorly written. For example, the notification section does not inform the parent as to how they make their declaration or the community's file. Legal access section does not track the statute, but appears to be missing language regarding accessible policy. The latter policy, IHBG, is directly linked to Pemro, contains more detail for the parents who desires or the parent who desires to homeschool. Moreover, the NHSBA has a staff attorney who reviews the and updates draft policies for the members. The last NHSBA review in two thousand and eighteen provides the last amendments to the Home Education statutes. It is unclear to me whether or not SDGA has a staff attorney drafting the new policies. Using policies which have been drafted by a staff attorney is likely to increase the amount of costs the district will pay in charging the overview. It is also my understanding that Pemro is a member of NHSBA and that part of this membership enrollment includes timely support policy updates. If for any reason the board would prefer to use the SDGA policy, we recommend that have us review and clarify the used aspects of policy. And then more also exercise care to ensure that it is a policy not a station state level. So it sounds to me like Dean's aware of this and it sounds to me like he's not in favor of this. Even anyone, uh which I don't think is what April's proposing anyway. I think she's saying that we should have Dean kind of come up with something that's based off of both of these and and her plans kind of to do this best for us. But I I guess I get the feeling that Dean is aware of this. Um then I wouldn't be saying that IHBG is appropriate to use. And I don't see anything that here where he suggests um that need to go from outside of that. So I guess that was a really long way to say, I think I agree to you now that takes some time to go over everything that I just got presented. So I guess tonight I will support the motion.
Sorry, I just want to state that um the information was the information that was given to board members is actually information that was printed from our drive, just to be able to put your eyes on paper and see that um the other things that were printed were just references to policies that were uh referenced in our current policy. So thank you, it's all public information.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we've got a motion for a second to uh instruct the the district attorney, the school district council um to draft a policy and replacement of IHBG as state that are paid for.
And it also addresses these flaws in the current policy.
So to to ask our council to draft a policy, replacement of IHBG that specifically addresses the deficiencies in that policy. All right. Question is rather than, question is rather than owning, I I'm not to not vote in favor of this at this moment in time because you have to homework it in. So maybe you can table it rather than hold it down to be revisited in the future?
I'm okay with that because I know it's just me, I'll just gather this material and I highlight it and try to cross reference. So I'm okay with that. I'm not sure what period of time is appropriate to ask that it be tabled. So I'd like to hear it from my fellow board members. And what's a good time for you? Thank you.
I I think it'd be uh, you know, the two weeks between now and our next meeting would be ample time for myself and Ray to look through this and figure it out. So I would like us to table this.
I'll second that.
There's a second for me.
And that's with the intention to? Of course, I withdraw my initial motion and I'll second Jean's. And I just want to clarify with that, that's with the intention to have it on the next school board agenda. Thank you.
All right, so there's a motion and a second table. Any other questions regarding that? I specifically say it's table until our next meeting, which is June fourth. Right, all favor of table.
Aye.
Post presentations. Quick, other policy discussion.
Um so GBDB, which is Non-Certified Benefit Package, is a policy that we've been carrying on the agenda uh pending the approval of the para contract. So that was approved at our district meeting. And I have asked our HR director to compare the current benefit package, that is a school board policy, to the para contract and let us know what those differences are so that the board can decide if they wanted to make any adjustments to that policy. So that policy will now cover those employees who aren't covered under the para agreement. So um custodians, food service workers, support staff, um those types of folks. So if you want to just hold off, she's going to do that comparison for us so that we don't have to.
Sounds good, ready?
Just had a couple of questions on there. When we discussed this in the past, number eight is bereavement days, that we had three. And I was concerned that I would like to nominate or make a change to at least five days. And I know it was discussed in the past that people have three days and they'd like to have more and they get in contact with the superintendent. But if they're in a bereavement situation, um I don't think it's fair for us to say, "Okay, policy can be done for four, five, or six." So that was something that I would like to see if, and also maybe if it's in the new para contract, that we raise that three days with at least five.
Everybody okay with, can we just ask um if she's going to compare and contrast and then bring forth this policy anyway? Um is four one to change that number from three to five? People agree with that? Amy?
Um I'm, I mean, it's not a final decision, but I'm I'm just a little bit reluctant. I mean, I personally have experienced all sorts of exogen horrible situations and it, you know, you have to be in communication with your employer. You know, even if it's to say like, "Not coming today." So I'm I'm just not, I'm not sure right now.
Sorry.
First of all, I want to say thank you for that comparison so we don't have to do that. Um in the past, when we reviewed, there's been notes put in uh if someone has a recommendation. So what I would propose is that we get the comparison and maybe just add Ann's note requesting that that number be up from three to five and then continue this conversation when we actually discuss the policy.
Change it, find the confirmation of the time and action on the policy. Another one, Steve, it's Amy's panel.
But then I'd like to make a motion that we table GBDB into a queue first.
I don't really need to individually table anything. I think they just will.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Um the other question I had is I did not see any benefit here for short-term disability. Is that something that's not even offered to any employees or public school district? I don't think so. So if anyone goes out with like, you know, shoulder surgery or appendix or that's something that you don't even offer? Is that something that we would be comfortable looking at? I mean, I don't know any industry out there that doesn't offer insurance for disability.
I mean, I would simply hear pricing and impact. I mean, I would certainly hear pricing and impact. I think, you know, not speaking from knowledge, but I have assumed in the past that staff accrues sick time. And in those circumstances, that sick time is used as sort of like the short-term. And rather than having actually short-term disability programs. And then there's also a sick bank, as far as teachers know, and I believe the pairs have that also.
I think so.
Yeah. So I think that's like the middle where, you know, they do their sick days, they have a sick bank so they can draw from the P B. And, you know, are covered that way to get to the sixty days for the long-term disability.
I would support getting more information and hearing more about the option for short-term disability, at least to consider something the board may or may not elect when I think information is good.
I'd also be interested in other districts doing it.
And just my last quick question. So when you mentioned long-term disability, we only have sixty days to go into long-term because most industry is six months? Before, uh, for these fights? Okay, just wondering. I just didn't want to have, you know, employee out, you know, when they just don't have to benefit. You know, emergency surgeries come up. And that was just my question.
Um, so I'm going to go ahead and try something here because I've got a lot of policies this week. I would like.
I'm so sorry. I need to leave the meeting now for another meeting. I, when my other meeting is done, I will rejoin this meeting and if it's still going, I will look forward to resuming joining you all. And if not, I hope you have a good rest of your meeting and I'll see you all the next one. Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, just call me back on my phone and meet. All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve policies A D C slash G B E B slash J I C G. This is the first one which ever been. Prohibitions regarding use and possession of tobacco products, ski cigarettes, and dippers in and on school facilities, playgrounds. Policy B B A A, School Board Member Authority. Policy V C A, Board Member Ethics. Policy D F A, Investment. And Policy I M A H, Daily Physical Activity. Those are all second reading. E E A is still on first reading, ordering this. I think that's a one, two, three, yeah.
I don't know if we need to be so formal and if we can talk before there's a second name. I personally would like more time to review A, the A D C G B E D J I C J, A D C X Y Z. And the first one, this is under second reading. Also, Policy D F A Investment. When I was looking through those, those are two that I felt like needed a little more time for me to examine. I don't want to be in a situation like we're with this homeschool policy. I want to try to take time, really dig in and do the work before moving forward on those. I also have concerns about B B A A and V C A, which is School Board Member Authority and Board Member Ethics. Those are not current policy that this district has. So I would not feel comfortable moving forward with those at this time.
Okay, so after we're ready, I M A H. And did you say D F A?
D F A, please more time.
So I'm going to motion, I will modify the motion that we approve policy I M A H, the physical activity.
This is April. I will second that motion.
Discussion.
I did notice in the research, we're on I M A H, daily physical activity. Our policy currently is dated 2006. The New Hampshire School Board Association policy is dated 2014. And it does include the legal references. I did not really see much difference besides the legal references when I compared the two policies. And that's why I would support approving this policy.
Please, do yours. Great, all favor of approving I M A H, daily physical activity. Most obsessions.
This is April. Although it's on the first reading, I would also like to make a motion to approve E E A G, use of private vehicles. It is in our first reading, but our current policy is dated nineteen ninety-seven. The school board association's policy is 2009. So that's a big difference. And it also includes the legal references. Thank you.
We're second for that. Second. Discussion, E E A G. Okay, and then all favor of approving policy E E A G. Close, my understanding is. Anything else anybody is bringing over tonight?
I was wondering if we could just go ahead and talk about, even though it's in first reading, a couple of those policies. The first is the G C B D, and we're going to staffs children. That is an optional policy. Not to go into deep, but I just wanted to advise my board members that the New Hampshire School Board Association does not have a similar policy to this one. The other one was a policy A A. I believe that's only one sentence. I'm not sure if we want to look at that to get something. It just says it's about voluntary improvement and the board shall encourage the involvement of citizens to fulfill the mission of the schools. Between now and our next meeting, I'd like to see what other school districts have maybe with that. And I'm not even sure. I wasn't clear and I'm not sure if our superintendent can tell us if A B A is a required optional. Or I could not tell what kind of policy that was. Thank you. Sorry, one more about A B A. It cross-references I J O C. So we may want to take a look at those two policies together. Thank you. In looking at A B A, I, Taffy had brought to my attention that there were some policies with no approval dates. She just kind of came across them and this is one of them. So it is very, it's possible that it was worked on and never finished because it's very unusual, double one sentence policy. But the thing that I don't know is about the, whether it's a priority or required. I think people typically use I J O C, not A B A. So let me get more information and I'll get back to you in the next. Thank you very much for that. Can we also possibly request a list? I cannot find it. It used to be on the New Hampshire School Board Association's website, a list of their required policies. I do look for that today and I was unable to locate it. So it'd be great if we could get a copy of that somewhere where we are. Thank you.
Anything else we're ready to go tonight? All right, go ahead.
Are we looking at all of these together or are we piecing them out? Because I had a question on G C B D.
Go ahead. I think we're taking a moment.
On the G C B D, my question is, it looks like we last looked at this in 2016. Is the current rate of thirty-six hundred dollars per year, is that current? Or is that something that's five years old?
That is the rate that's currently being charged. I don't know that it was based on any certain percentage of the current tuition rate. I think it was just the board established on dollar value.
Thank you. The second question I have, the second paragraph that said that before accepting the child at Jordan, consider the factors. Class size, total enrollment, child's, the student's pass record, requires special services, potential effects in receiving class. I know we've approved some staffing in the past and this information hasn't been brought forward. So I didn't know that was something that we would ask ahead of time.
Those are things that we consider. We make sure that the class sizes, the classes aren't too full. We do consider all of those factors.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. I was just concerned about the student's pass forward record is that, that's to me sounded like more protective information that we shouldn't have access. Thank you, Patty.
Regarding G C B D enrollment staffs, so I was curious, as part of the agreement with the staffs that we currently have on hand or in effect, do either of those contracts mention this particular benefit? So we are not obligated to provide this. Thank you.
Right, that's not a heavy of policies. All right, I guess I would encourage our way to go ahead and push on. Get ready to wrap up for the year.
Could we hear more on my B B A A, School Board Member Authority and V C A, Board Member Ethics were added for the board to consider, being that we don't have these policies? In the research I've done, these are generally very controversial policies for school boards. Because what it sometimes can be perceived is that school board members cannot be trusted to do the right thing or to take lessons from the New Hampshire School Board Association on what their duties and roles are, or those sort of things. So I would like to learn more information about how these came to the on our agenda. Thank you.
So I guess Patty and I and probably others are helping to go to copy. Got an email from the staff member. Anyone else?
Um, part of V C A actually includes a V C A dash R, which was not included in our drive to review. And that's a piece that school members have to sign. My understanding and talking to other board members is that sometimes board members do not sign that. What's the repercussions? Because they are elected official and the school board member doesn't have the right to throw them off the board just because they want to sign a piece of paper made up by the school district. Thank you. Well, I was just going to say, could we get V C A R in the drive again? That's another one there's associated. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I just had a quick question on J L C D. Going over the information on number one, under A, it's prescription medications will only be administered in school only after receiving and setting out, you know, the documentation. I wasn't sure in here that it says this will only be administered by the nurse. Because if I get on to letter D, no person shall share or otherwise administer any prescription or overcounting patients for the student except as provided in this policy. So I'm looking for if one is just the nurse going to administer it or is it staffing? Because D says no, you know, no one else would be able to.
Good answer.
Sorry, my answer's just a question off the end. And part of the reason is, what if a student can self-administer as well? So in the beginning part, and it talks about medication even being administered by the nurse or someone, the nurse delegates to do it. So typically the nurse asks if somebody is trained and able to give, you know, has all the information to give the student the right medication. I think the further in the policy, it's saying that people should be, otherwise unless they're designated, they shouldn't be sharing medication or administering it to other people. There is specifically a provision for students with asthma medication. And I think it's EpiPent or the other, the two that allow a student, I think, to self-administer. I'd have to check further, but those are the two that come to mind.
So should letter D be non-designated administrative administration?
Just last page. I don't think it's worth to add that. I think it's applied from A, but I don't think it's worth to add that, to clarify.
Yeah, because my concern is insulin. You know, you know, the students know how much they need, whatever, whatever. And if those two people are busy, then that third person can say, you know, okay, if you're listening, you're supposed to dig fifteen. The kid has fifteen and his needle, they can authorize that. Because, you know, not with the EpiPent and inhalers, insulin is discriminative against medication. So I just wanted to be sure that that would be something that, a second portion of that.
Could you send suggested language to Abby and she can do what she usually does, add that into the policy and make sure it's in the drive?
Oh, sure. Yes. Yeah, I'll just like my suggestion. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
I really do not like adding to the list of tasks that this board has. But on J L C D R, it references E H B and E H B dash R. So we should probably take a look at those in conjunction with this policy. Thank you.
Great, number ten, informational items.
First item is you have the school board association coming to do your training on June tenth. So that's a move that's been added. And then for your goals meeting, I was hoping I could throw a few options and have you decide tonight. So in comparing everyone's availability over June, July, and August, there's a couple of options. We could add another meeting June seventeenth, so it would be following the training to do your goals. We could do your goal setting at your August third regularly scheduled meeting. Or the other option is July twenty-seventh was a July date that people were available. So I just wanted the board to be able to take here, do you remember those?
Clearly, I can give you the. Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing, June seventeenth. Just get over them with, you know, busy June first meeting, tenth, and seventeenth, and then agree. That's the last promotion and preparation, which is.
Yeah, because those are the circumstances. Yeah, I think June ones are great. It's a dream to have June, but I agree with June because I'm not sure that we're going to be able to set these goals and walk away. I bet there's going to be work to be done and it gives us time to do that work. Thank you.
All right, is that enough for informational?
Yes.
All right.
So looking at the ten and seventeen, same time, same track. That was, that must have gone otherwise.
No, I mean. No, this is good for now. I mean, if there was some reason why I was going to dispatch the library, yes. Those meeting, work sessions, we're probably not going to have a attendance for the public, so that's an option. But I think without a reason, I can stay here.
Yeah, why can't I bring you some?
So I am.
Yours, okay, Josh.
It's open because of P Y L anyway, so it's not much work.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
All right, that brings to our second, upcoming session, but we don't have any public, so we move right along. And so board has made it go into a non-public session. The board's with the majority of our say no. The board's with the head of charge, say, number one, dash, A, code three, one, two. Smaller than B, which is the hiring of any person's public employee, and smaller than C, which is matters which are discussed in public, but likely affect the person's reputation of any person in public. Or public, the amount of people.
Yeah.
In.
Yes.
Team has one and yes.
I would like to nominate Jackie Vitale for third grade teaching position at Tetherhill.
Make a motion that we accept the nomination.
Okay. All right, forward to.
And we have two staff resignations we will take out tomorrow. I make a motion that we accept the resignations.
I'll second.
All right, the motion in a second to accept the resignation, presented, all favorites. All those. Wonderful, that's a very good.
Yep.
So our next meeting is June 1, 6:30 right here. We are hopeful that the new camera system will be in place that time around, so we may have better audio. May have to worry either, who knows?
Big question, teacher?
All right, second, all favor.
Congratulations.